All right, well, let's get started. According to order, the public hearing for Community Board Eight for review of the New York City Agency responses to our requests for budget items for fiscal year 2025. I thank all of those in attendance, particularly Scott and Margaret and Julie and Bob for being here. As we noted, you don't need to be here, and Marty, you don't need to be here. You're not required, but it's necessary to be there. And I'm sorry, Rita as well.
Thank you.
And Jody's here. We don't have anybody who has signed up to speak, but some tells me that, Jody, you're here because you would like to speak. I don't know who Kiata is.
Yeah, does that mean I get everybody's minutes to speak?
No, you still get three. We will be flexible with three minutes. But again, remember, it is focused on the agency responses for fiscal year 2025. Anything new?
Yes, David, I've been doing this a very long time.
Jody, Jody, I'm speaking to everybody, including Kiata, who I don't know. So it's, if you do have ideas for fiscal 2026 and beyond, please bring them to the committee meetings in February, March, and April. Having said that, well, Kiata, could you identify yourself, your, you know, if you're involved with an agency or care about a particular item, and then we'll start with Jody after that.
Hi, yeah, I'm Kiata Nixon. I'm just a member of the community. I just saw a notice on Facebook that there is a meeting, so I'm just tuning in.
Excellent. Excellent. We like to hear that. Everybody from the community is invited. That's exactly the purpose of this, is to hear what you think about the budget. Have you had the opportunity to look at the agency responses?
I have not.
Okay. If you did get the notice of this meeting, there's a link to those responses.
And it's on our website.
It's on our website, but you were going to give me a copy of that printout.
It's right there. You left it over there.
Oh, that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Jody, with a flexible three minutes, what you got to say, lady?
Well, you know, we put a lot of time, the community and the board put a lot of time into carefully crafting all of these requests and prioritizing them. And for this year, this year, there were fewer "Ask Your Councilmember for Money" responses, but there's a, but there was a new one that was like, "Contact the agency immediately." So it seems like the majority of the requests are now back in the community board's lap to work out with the agencies, which is a very different response than in the past, where they would say, "Oh, the agency supports this request, but there's not funding." So I just wanted to fetch about that for a little bit, because it just seems like, it just seems like it's, yeah, thanks for telling us, you got to work it out with the agencies directly. The other thing I wanted to mention is we've put in that request for the PEP officers for Van Cortlandt Park. I think this is the second or third time they've been submitted. And I think the answer was further study required or no funding, when both Community Board Seven and Twelve did request additional PEP officers, and it said that the agency supported their request. So I was just kind of curious, you know, if, I'm just kind of curious about the differing responses to our community board versus other community boards when they're asking for more enforcement for their parks. So, so those two things were on my radar. And then the third thing is, it did say that the NYC Compost Project is fully funded by sanitation, but it is not. It was fully eliminated by sanitation. So I just wanted to bring those three things and the topics that I kind of dig into the deepest to the board's attention, and saying that I'm not happy with the responses, because they pushed a lot of it back onto your shoulders. So that's less than three minutes, but that's all I have to say today.
Okay. If I may respond, I could have sworn that we did get notice that the composting was added back in, but we will confirm that. In terms of the PEP officers, our request, I think, was different. While we typically ask for more PEP officers, I think in this case, we were asking for a command post in Van Cortlandt Park, and that's very different. That's sort of reorganizing them, and I can sort of understand the pushback. In fact, I think I voted personally, I voted against it, because I'm not inclined to tell an agency how it should operate, although having a command post in Van Cortlandt would be advantageous to us. In terms of speaking to the agencies, we'll have to look at them individually. Julie, Farah, and I will be composing our annual letter, hopefully in the next thirty hours, to give our response to these agency responses, incorporating your comments and Kiata's, if she has any. But that's largely where we stand with the responses so far.
Right, that's good. I would appreciate it if you could update me on the compost project, because as of the November financial plan, which is when these responses came out, there was zero funding. It was eliminated through fiscal year 28.
These responses only came out three weeks ago.
Yeah, so that's why I'm curious, because, because there's still, you know, there's still council members and a huge coalition that I'm part of that are still lobbying to get it refunded. So, so that's, I'm curious if you have information.
Well, we just met, DS and I came to our Economic Development Committee meeting and also mentioned that program is, is back this year, but I'll confirm again. And we have been actually reaching out for certain people that get composting in their buildings and areas.
Oh, no, no, those two, I'm sorry, there's two different programs. There's Curbside, which is the city picks up, and then there's the NYC Compost Project, which is the seven nonprofits that provide the outreach and education to residents about making their own composts. And that was, that's the program I was in for twenty years that I managed. They eliminated that.
Got it.
Right. I think it's a former that we got the positive response on.
Yeah, I will, I'll double check on this one now. Thanks for the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's specifically the request that says NYC Compost Project's outreach and education.
Compost Project, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And, and in our district, that is much more important than most districts. So, it's a point well taken. We will check that out in the morning. Anything else?
No, that's it. That's it short this time.
Okay. Kiata, I know you're new to this. How familiar are you with this process at all?
I'm not. You know, I just, again, I just was just tuning in as a silent observer. I am having difficulty finding the link you were mentioning on the website.
It's on the main page of our homepage. It's called the FY25 Register of Budget Priorities. It's on the homepage of BX08, the CB, Community Board homepage. If you look further down, there's a budget section with a lot of links.
Are you aware of where our, our, our homepage is?
I, I am, yep. I'm looking for it now.
All right, so you can look it up later.
Yeah, don't let people drop it.
Let me just give you a quick overview of the budget process, real fast. The fiscal year runs from July first to June thirtieth for the City of New York. We are now in fiscal year 2024, which will end this June thirtieth. What we are talking about is budget, capital and expense budget requests that we prioritize and submitted to the various agencies, parks, sanitation, transportation, et cetera. We submitted them after budget hearing in September. We submitted them in October. The agencies, well, it's referred to as the mayor's budget that he sent to us, but it's really the agencies' responses. We got them about three weeks ago. That is, the register is what you can find on the homepage of our website, and it is referring to fiscal year 2025, which will start July first, going through next June thirtieth. And if you're interested, you're welcome to participate, to attend any committee meetings this month, March and April, where we, the committees will be soliciting from board members as well as community members, ideas for what we should do. Get more lawn mowers, to get more trash baskets, to get more collections, to get, actually, a big thing is requesting paving on various blocks. So you could learn a lot and contribute to that at the committee meetings each month. And that, too, you can find on our website. But tonight, we are just discussing the mayor's agency responses for fiscal 2025. Jody has been experienced with this for a couple of years, and she gave us some inputs, primarily on the parks and sanitation. So, any particular questions that we can help you with?
No, nothing in particular, and I have now found it. So I am scrolling through it. Thank you so much for your help.
Good. And feel free to call the office and ask the staff questions, or send them emails. I think there's an email address on that page as well. And if you have questions for me, I don't think my email address is there, but they can certainly forward questions to me. So, Scott, do you have your hand up, or is that?
Uh...
Or is that the mouse?
No, that's just...
Oh, okay. Okay, Rita, since you were here first, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm just interested to hear the proceedings.
Okay. Scott and Margaret, you were next. Do you have any comments or questions?
Nope. Thanks a lot, David.
You bet. Margaret, do you have any?
Um, yeah, I took a couple of notes. These are just like, yeah, just off the top of my head regarding capital. I mean, it would be nice to, and I'm sure you have feelings about this, but, you know, anything that city agencies say that won't be funded this year, but they recommend that we resubmit in the following fiscal year? I mean, I'd like to sort of offer that up as something for the committees to automatically go back on their list, you know, as a recommendation of like, you know, this is something that we should keep pushing, even though the city said it couldn't be funded, or it wasn't funded, that we keep pushing it year after year. Certainly, I know priorities can change, but for something that feels like it's within reach or a possibility, you know, just recommending that that stays, because we've limited our priorities here to be very focused, you know, as a recommendation for committees to revisit those in the following fiscal year. For number fifteen and sixteen, this is probably my memory misguiding me, but I thought one or both of them were already underway, and so I was surprised that we didn't see that they would be either completed, or that they were already being funded in the agency response. Am I misremembering?
Are you referring to Fort Four and Fort Independence?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have an answer for that.
And maybe it's me misremembering, but I thought, kind of, on last year's agency response, that they said it was funded, or that there was an announcement by the Pearl President or something. I'll, I'll go back and take a look.
The one, I think that they funded Strong Street Playground, which is adjacent to that.
There are two, there are two blocks in that area that do have funding, Margaret. One, exactly as David said, is the Strong Street Playground, which is only two blocks down from the Fort Independence. The other one is the restroom at, at 044.
Fort Four.
044. And that restroom is supposedly under construction now.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that was years we were trying to get that funded, yeah.
Okay.
You raised a good point, Margaret, because we're in the budget process. I think, and I'm sorry, Deb Travis isn't here, but, you know, I say this to her, too. I think we need to get an update from the agencies as we go forward.
Can I add to that? We are, we did reach out to parks to set up a meeting to discuss all these budget items. So, yeah, she's already started.
And is Bailey included in that conversation?
Whatever, all of it.
Bailey isn't really well indicated here, but supposedly, our council members have found money, and so it seems to be getting funded outside of the cycle.
He's doing it, yeah. Kevin Sanchez together, they're working together on Bailey's.
Okay, so that should be included in the conversation you have with them? That's all I'm getting at. And Margaret, actually, you know, I agree with you, because I've always said that to the committees, you should start with a blank slate to get whatever new idea is coming out, but typically, the committees start with last year's and try to add to that. So realistically, what happened?
Okay. I thought it was great. I have a few more bullet points here, if you're, if you're interested. I'll send them to you via email. The bus shelter form, that's great to know. I didn't know that that existed before. And I agree that, I agree with Jody's comments about compost not being funded. Why does it say that it is? And then under aging, I apologize, I didn't write down the number, but for food, is this an expense? Did I accidentally put this under expense? Maybe I'll come back to aging while I look for it quickly.
You're welcome to do that, but also, could you just create an email with these bullets?
Yes, I, yes, I said, I have it, and I'll send it to you.
Oh, okay.
So, so for aging, are they referring to SNAP? Or like, why are they referencing federal dollars? It seems weird.
Number thirteen.
Thirteen under capital?
No, under expense for food programs in districts.
Okay, sorry. I don't know, I must have got turned around a little bit. Sorry about that. So back to capital.
Yeah, it's, "To DIFTA for food programs in the district increase need for congregate food programs, additional food pantries, and home-delivered meals for older adults." I wasn't aware that we had food pantries. I mean, certainly, we have congregate food, you know, meals at the centers, and they, I think they do some home deliveries. Certainly, there's Rain that I think does home delivery, but I wasn't aware of pantry.
Well, KHCC has a food pantry, and St. Stephen's had one, and Church of the Mediator had one, but the challenge with those is that to get federal dollars, it has to be congregate, for the most part, when you're getting CACFP contracts, it has to be congregate seating or meals. So it's not, it's very, those are cooked meals, there's that kind of stuff. So in terms of federal dollars, I'm not sure, maybe we just need some clarification on what they mean by that.
But also, the ones you, the ones you mentioned are not senior centers, and I don't think would be aging-oriented, right?
Right.
I think they're general food programs.
Well, yeah, they're general food programs, but you have specific populations that are funded. It's usually school-aged children, adults, older adults, so they can all fall under those kinds of contracts.
Not for aging.
Yeah, for aging, for older adults, yeah.
For older adults, sure.
Mm-hmm.
But for, for children, I think those are through schools and whatnot. I don't think DIFTA would be involved with that. I mean, aging is making this request to DIFTA for aging.
But DIFTA is city, it's a city entity, so I'm just not, I'm not understanding why they're referencing federal dollars when we're asking DIFTA for money. Schools, yes, of course, they provide food, but also nonprofits like RSS, like KHCC, they provide food through their contracts, and those are usually federal contracts. So I'm just, I'm confused as to why DIFTA is saying that we need more federal dollars when it could be coming from state or city sources. So anyway, for KHCC, did we designate that as a cultural department request? For the capital request?
Which, which item, which capital item were you referring to?
Uh, KHCC.
It's number six. And I think they finished, they said.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Parents here.
For parks.
Yeah, for parks.
It just seems like a sidestep to say that there, it doesn't meet the cultural department criteria, and so I was wondering if we accidentally phrased it as, as cultural, rather than a Parks Department, or education, or anything else? So maybe that's, maybe that's feedback for us.
It is number six. Renovator upgrade a, an existing cultural facility for KHCC, and the agency response was, "The project does not meet city capital funding requirements for cultural projects."
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's a Parks Department property.
Yeah.
That's the reason.
Yeah, we're sort of hamstrung that way.
Has, has the capital worked, Margaret?
I don't know. I mean, I think it was being taken under de-cas and funded through the city, so maybe it's a non-issue, but it seems like a sidestep here. Maybe they could, I mean, I would have, if they would have said this is being addressed or funded through de-cas or another part of the city, I would have been more understanding of that response, but it just seems like an odd piece that they latched onto and then, and then put it under cultural, rather than all of the other places it could have fit.
Well, as you may be aware, we have complained for years that Parks does not have a capital budget, and so it's hard for us to make these kind of requests. And in fact, we just found out in our tour three weeks ago of the Van Cortlandt Mansion, that fifteen million dollars is being allocated to repairs to the mansion, which was really exciting until I, we learned that that's just for the roof and repointing the brick. It's like nothing else to the building. But point being is that that wasn't money that we actually requested. We're glad to have it, but we'd never actually made a request for it, and they came up with money for it, but it doesn't go very far. And so in, in a similar vein, it, we probably should talk amongst ourselves, and probably with Deb, and with Stephanie Ehrlich, to find out exactly how they managed to get Parks to find that money, and then figure out how we could make a similar campaign for KHCC. But at the moment, I don't know.
And I just want to add to that point. I did go over this with Deb after my meeting with Councilwoman Dinowitz. Again, that was something I believe he said he funded, and that most of that work is done for KHCC, the roof repairs. So I could follow up with you, just to reconfirm. I have to look at my notes, but it was something I did go over with Deb. You know, any kind of things he funded, depending on the committee, I reached out to those chairs to let them know, and I believe KHCC, the roof repairs, was one of them. So I'll, I'll let you know more about that.
Okay. Last couple of points, the Step Street Plan for number twenty-six, or it doesn't even reference, I know there had been a Step Street Plan. Why isn't it referenced that these are, it just sort of says, like, more research is required? Just seems kind of like an odd response when allegedly there's a Step Street Plan, unless the plan no longer exists, or unless they're not going to be working on it. That's a question for Deb.
Twenty-six.
No, twenty-six is the overpass at, on the Henry Hudson Parkway. But that, I don't think that's the Step Streets you're referring to, right?
No, there's a whole list of Step Streets. No.
I know.
A different number?
Yeah, do you happen to have the number from the, the budget register?
I'm sure, I'll pull it up. Then, expense, the last one I have, is number four, EAP. I don't think we were asking for mental health services for city employees. It seemed weird, like a weird response.
Mm-hmm. No, point well taken. I think we've had a bit of a gap in the transition of chairs, so we'll have to follow up on that.
That answer makes no sense in light of the question.
Yeah.
If they, if they just dropped those, those last few words, NYC employees, it actually would be...
And actually, just that there's such a thing as an EAP doesn't answer whether they're going to provide services to anybody, just what they already do.
I will, can you follow up with the new chair?
And then, the Step Street is actually under expense. It's number three. I guess that's resubmit for the following fiscal year.
Well, no, it never was. That's really weird. Resubmit for consideration in FY25, but this is what we did submit for fiscal 25. So that's a little puzzling, too. Yeah, it was definitely for Marlborough Hill, Godwood and Terrace, West 238 and Bally Avenue, they were all part of our 25 submission, so, I don't know.
I'm trying to take from last year and answer, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Have a different conversation about this. Okay, thank you very much, Margaret. These are quite helpful and pointed. By the way, did you get my phone message last week? I called you and left you a voicemail.
No.
About tonight, yeah, on your cellphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
No, I, sometimes...
It was a 202 number.
Yeah.
You have a 202 number, right? Yeah.
Yeah, but I've been having this thing where it doesn't show up for like, a week. Sometimes I don't even get an alert that someone called, so I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. Well, you know, sort of a corollary to the paranoia thought, you mean, just because you think that your phone doesn't like you, doesn't mean that it doesn't. Marty, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I got your call last week. I called you back, and that's why I'm here.
Yes, you did.
Also because I love hearing about the City of No.
City of No.
And to say, best wishes to all of you. That's all.
Okay. Maybe we'll see you on the fourth.
Okay.
And bring back some warm weather.
Oh, my.
All right.
Where is she going?
No, 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 he's in Florida.
It's cold there, believe me.
You're down there, aren't you?
Yes, and it's been very cool, very cool.
We've, we've lost Scott, because he's participating in the public safety, and I actually want him to get down there. So if, if there are no other issues, I'd like to conclude our meeting, our hearing, excuse me, our hearing. Seeing no objection. Kiata, thank you for joining us, and strongly encourage you to check out when we have committee meetings and maybe join our next board meeting, which is probably...
March 12.
March 12. All right, which you... All right, which you can attend in person. All right, Margaret, where, do we know where that one's going to be?
That's going to be at Manhattan College, the, the building for student commons. I'm going to post...
The New Kelly Building?
The New Kelly Building.
Okay, okay.